Sorry, I turned it off. Okay, good evening and welcome to the January 5th meeting of the Humboldt County Planning Commission. I am Chair Noah Levy, presiding this evening. Before we get started, I just want to bring your attention to the fact that our agenda lists the various ways that you can connect to this meeting, online or by phone, so please take a look at our agenda and follow the instructions for doing that either by phone or by Zoom or by the livestream of the meeting, which can be found on humboldt-ledgestar.com. And with that, excuse me, I will invite you to join me for a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and before we have a roll call of commissioners present, I just want to take a moment to welcome our newest Commissioner, Ivor Scavdall. Welcome, sir. Great to have you. Thanks for coming aboard.
Thank you for having me here.
And I also just wanted to take a moment to recognize and thank Alan Bongio, who stepped down at the end of the year. Alan was on this commission for 10 years, and he was the Chair for the last three years plus. And during that time that he was Chair, he never missed a single meeting, and that's notable. I was the Vice Chair, and I never got a chance to step up in his stead, and I think that just speaks to the fact that he really did have great devotion to this position and put a lot of hours of service into it, so I want to thank him for that.
Thank you.
Okay, and with that, we will, Chip, can we have a roll call of commissioners present?
Present.
Noah Levy.
Present.
Brian Mitchell.
Present.
Mike Newman.
Here.
Melanie McCaver.
Here.
Peggy O'Neil.
And Thomas Mulder.
Present.
Okay, so we have a quorum tonight, six out of seven attending, either in person or virtually. That brings us to item C, which is Agenda modifications. Director Ford, do we have any modifications to the agenda tonight?
Evening Chair, we do not have any modifications. There is one supplemental that was provided tonight, and that is the watershed map for Denali Farms, that's item E4.
I am, there was also a letter that was submitted tonight for the Karnes.
Denali Farms.
CUP.
Oh.
And that's item G2.
Got it. Okay, thank you. All right, then with that, we will move to item D, which is Public Comments. This is the time in the meeting when we welcome comments about matters that are not on the agenda but within the purview of this commission. So, oops, sorry, just wanted to check my Zoom attendees. Yes, so this is the time for comments about matters not on tonight's agenda. I do see one hand up that is on the phone, public 7454. Good evening, you are recognized, and it's your chance to speak.
Good evening Chair Levy, can you hear me?
I can hear you, thank you.
Okay, loud and clear, I hope. Well, we've had kind of a tumultuous thing going on with Mother Nature here. Anyway, that does have a major effect on land use, doesn't it? I did wish to also reach out and thank Alan Bongio for his dedication to the position and to welcome our new Commissioner there also at this time. As far as land use goes, I've been kind of tracking something which has major, major impacts on many of the landowners within Humboldt County, and that is the GRTA, the Great Redwood Trail. The supervisors, my understanding is had a land use issue, an abandonment of roads, and we have all kinds of easements, all kinds of fee title owned by, supposedly owned by ENCRH, and then the Great Redwood Trail. Some of these swaths going right through people's property are as much as 90 feet wide in size as far as some of these old easements, a lot of the other ones are only 25 feet. And that is going to have major impact upon the use that people can have, the entitlements they have. And the problem I've been finding with this and one of your basis for your land use is it's really hard to tell who owns what and what these easements are. So, these will be things possibly brought before this commission sometime in the future, and I'm trying to, a real puzzle to put together, I really feel sorry for your staff, whether they have to address issues regarding this particular land use issue. And hopefully, we will all get to the bottom of what's happening here. Personally, this particular land use, I have a little bit of a problem with. I feel Mother Nature threw the Great Iron Horse into the river, and she really doesn't want us out there, same as other things I represent before you as far as Mother Nature's viewpoint. And again, I always request that you possibly look at things from what would Mother Nature want. Thank you for your opportunity to speak on these, the non-agendized items.
Thank you, Mr. Swatsky. Are there any others who wish to make public comment on matters not on our agenda tonight? Seeing none, I will close Public Comments, and that moves us to section E of the agenda, that's the Consent Agenda. So as usual, I will run through these items, and we will see which of these, if any, need to be pulled off Consent for a hearing or for further discussion. The first item on Consent is item 1, Adoption of Resolution Authorizing Remote Teleconference Meetings of this Commission for the period from tonight through February 4th. And I just want to note about that, that I have been advised that this will be the last month in which that is authorized, according to changes in state law. If my understanding is correct, correct me if I'm wrong, Director, this February 4th will be the last meeting that we can do meetings, that Commissioners can participate remotely, is that correct?
The Commissioners, there are circumstances under which a Commissioner can participate remotely, but it's not as free as it has been, and we will give a training on that next, at the next meeting.
Okay, there will be a training.
Yeah.
But just for the record, the public will still be able to participate by Zoom or by phone remotely.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, so that is item 1. Any further discussion about item 1? No, okay. Item 2 on Consent is Review and Approval of the December 15th, 2022 Action Summary. Any, oh, I've got a hand up, sorry, thank you for pointing that out. I see Commissioner Mulder.
I'd like to pull that to discuss something on, under item I, on Report from Planner, just something I would like to note personally, but, so I think it'd be better to pull it.
Okay, so pull the action summary from last meeting.
Yes.
Okay, we will pull that. All right, item 3 is Willow Creek Ventures Project in the Willow Creek area. The recommendation is to continue this to the January 19th meeting. Any questions or discussion about this item? No, all right, so that will remain on consent. Item 4 is the Denali Farm LLC, CUP in the Dinsmore area, which is recommended for approval. Does anyone either on the commission or in the audience wish to pull that for discussion or comment? Okay, seeing none, then that will remain on consent. Item 5, Enchanted Springs Conditional Use Permit in the Willow Creek area. This item is being recommended for denial. Any, anyone in the commission or the public wish to comment on this one? Okay, that will remain on consent. Item 6 is Earth Green Cali Farms Conditional Use Permit in the Bloxburg area, recommended for approval. Any comment or questions about this one? I do see a hand up, so we will pull this one, item 6, Earth Green Cali Farms, for Item number 7 on Consent is Dave Thomas Conditional Use Permit and Special Permits in the Honeydew Area. Any questions or comments? I see a hand up on that item as well, so that will be pulled for further discussion. Item 8 is Verdant Futures Conditional Use and Special Permits Modification in the Garberville area, recommended for approval. Any questions or comments from the commission or the public? Okay, then that will stay on consent. And finally, the Humboldt Hill Land and Cattle Company Parcel Map Subdivision and Lot Line Adjustment, Second Extension in the Humboldt Hill area. Are there any members of the commission or the public who would like to comment on or discuss this one? Seeing none, then that will remain on consent as well. So then, just to review, it looks like on consent, we have items 1, 1, 3, 4, 5, 8, and 9.
I'll motion to approve the consent calendar excluding items 2, 6, and 7.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Chip, can we please get a vote on that motion?
Ivor Scavdall.
Approve.
Noah Levy.
Yes.
Brian Mitchell. Mike Newman.
Yes.
Melanie McCaver.
Yes.
And Thomas Mulder.
Yes.
Okay, then that brings us to section G of the agenda, Old Business, and the first item is High Grade 007 LLC Conditional Use and Special Permit in the Dinsmore area. And I would welcome a staff report on this item.
Hello Commissioners, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, this is the High Grade 007 LLC project. It's in the Dinsmore area. In addition to the conditional use permit for the 10,000 square feet of outdoor light depth, there's a special permit for a set bed reduction to 500 feet from undeveloped public lands to the southwest. There's a bit of Six Rivers National Forest that spills over Highway 36 onto a former agricultural flat and river bar. The 10,000 square feet of existing outdoor light depth is in six greenhouses on a graded flat. There is also about a 971 square foot nursery and a 288 square foot drying shed powered by generators. Water usage is approximately 80,000 gallons a year, and the water is sourced from a 350 foot deep well and stored in 16,000 gallons of hard tanks. The well was recorded most recently to produce 5 gallons per minute, and that could produce 7,200 gallons in a 24-hour period. No development of the parcels proposed, there's no residences or septic systems, and approximately two to four employees would service the operation. Regarding electricity, the applicant would use a Honda 7000 generator in a noise containment shed for 100% of their energy needs until either PG&E connects to Cobb Road or a solar power system capable of supplying 80% of annual energy demands can be established by the 2025 cultivation season. That appears as condition number nine in the attachments. According to the well hydrologic connectivity report prepared by a professional engineering geologist, that file is attachment 4C, the well in the subject parcel has a minimal likelihood of being hydrologically connected in any manner that might significantly affect adjacent wetlands or surface waters in the vicinity. And I prepared a diagram here based on the well hydrological evaluation by the engineer. You can see the Van Duzen on the left in blue, approximately 2,400 feet, goes up along the river bar to State Route 36, and then it goes up a somewhat steep hill to the cultivation site where the well is approximately at 2,600 feet elevation. The 350-foot well, you can see extends approximately 130 feet below the Van Duzen, and the Van Duzen is approximately 1,500 feet away. The geologist determined that the primary water bearing unit is consisted of fractured sandstone, as you can see in the light blue cartoon image there. The well evaluation did not determine that this is a confined aquifer, but as I said, in the geologist's professional opinion, the well does not appear to be hydrologically connected or capable of influencing the Van Duzen River, nor does this well appear to be hydrologically connected to any local springs or ephemeral wetlands. And the nearest map springs are between 4,700, 47 and 5,700 feet away. The geologist determined that, given the horizontal distances involved, the elevation differences between the water producing zone in the subject well and the surface waters of the nearest watercourses, the potential for significant hydrological connectivity between these waters and the groundwater appears low. And then for my last slide, you can see, these are also in the attachments, the site plan on the right, you can see the greenhouse is consolidated to one portion of the parcel right off of Cobb Road, and on the left, you can just see there in relation to State Highway 36 in red and the Van Duzen further to the southwest. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them as I can.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you give us back your screen, please?
Of course.
Perfect, thank you so much, just so I can see the hands up on Zoom.
Sure.
Okay, well, are there any questions for Mr. Mayor from the commission? We do have one hand up, public comment. Oh, Brian Mitchell's hand, thank you. Yeah, I got to switch back and forth between those. Sorry, Commissioner Mitchell, yes, you would like to ask a question?
Yeah, is this the one where there was some correspondence from BLM with their concerns with the reduced setback?
I believe the public land is Six Rivers National Forest.
I believe you're thinking of, I think that was the one in the Honeydew area, I think that was Dave Thomas, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, so then, there is a hand up in the audience, so I will now, before we get into a discussion, see if there are any members of the public wishing to comment on this item. Are there any members of the audience in the room wishing to comment on High Grade 007? No, okay, then I will go to the virtual attendees, and I do see one hand up, public 7454, Mr. Swatsky, it's your three minutes.
I did wish to thank John Ford for going over all of these with me today. There are two or three that would have been pulled, but really appreciate your staff working with the public to see that the questions are answered. Unfortunately, even with the questions that were asked, I still do have some further questions on this. I'm pleased to see we have somebody in the engineering field, I believe, up there on the commission now specifically, and I've always had angst with having a geological engineer making these recommendations and terminations rather than a hydrological engineer, somebody who specializes in this. When I look at the map there and things, it says that it's a minimal likelihood, I'm no expert on this, but the elevation didn't show in there, I could see there being quite a bit of a likelihood. In other words, they didn't apparently had to drill their well down to a level that appears to be below the river there. I just question whether, it's most likely that the water that's in this particular well is feeding the river, and in my opinion, I would consider it possibly being hydrologically connected. That's something you may wish to get further information on, a little more feedback. We also have questions regarding the Six Rivers National Forest location there, and I would really request that staff read into the record any comments made by Six Rivers National to bring it to everybody's attention, if there were. Obviously, we know they have a policy where they, it's very unlikely that they would change that, and I recommend allowing this. They may have their standard not recommending it because it's a federal criminal activity that you're permitting, and of course, we all can agree to disagree on whether that's appropriate or not. But I do think that those two things were a good share of my concern. A lot of the concern was also based upon, you have this well, which is producing probably during a short drawdown to impaired 5 gallons per minute, which is not a lot of water, it's not 1 gallon like the one we had last time. But we are looking at, let's see, our storage is what on this particular one, 80,000, no, let's see, the 80,000 is the use. Anyway, I just, I do question whether, you know, all these things have sufficient storage based upon the potential of this well being hydrologically connected, and I would like to have a little bit more insight regarding that. Do appreciate the fact that it was clarified that it would be, the energy would be done in a timely manner, again, going over to the solar power, and I appreciate that on this particular project. Thank you for your opportunity to speak. It's a small little one, but they all add up, don't they?
Thank you, sir. Are there any other members of the public wishing to comment on this item, High Grade 007? Okay, seeing none, then I will bring it back to the commission, and Commissioner McCaver.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Swatsky, for making that call. I just wanted to say that within this scientific process, which does extend to engineering often, it typically, we wouldn't assign zero likelihood, you know, for something like this. It would be measured in terms of low or high likelihood. That being said, I would love to see a probability or a range of probabilities assigned to that, you know, given that it comes up with nearly every project every week. I'm sure it's something that the geologist does already have in order to make that statement or conclusion, so I think it would be great if we could have that. That's all, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or thoughts from the commission about this one or other questions?
I'll just comment on the water issue. This project's pretty small, and the total water demand is 80,000 gallons a year, it's pretty de minimis, and the peak is 15,000 gallons a month, which actually with this 5 gallon a minute well, is about two days.
Yeah.
Of demand on the well, so, and again, having some property in that area, I know that there are a lot of people, quite frankly, adjacent to the river would be thrilled to have a well that produces 5 gallons a minute, and they're right next to the river, so the soils out there are quite varied. His property's up on the hillside, out of the, out of the river alluvium.
Yeah.
And I think the hydrogeologist's report saying that it is highly unlikely is, in fact, quite true.
Thank you.
I can support that.
Yeah, thanks, and I appreciate you pointing out that it is actually a very small total water demand that it's making, and not, not close to what the well is supposed to be able to produce. So, any other thoughts about this, or are we, any other questions about this, or are we perhaps ready to move it forward? Yes, Commissioner Newman?
I'm prepared to move this forward. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the Resolution 23, 22, 1792, attachment, which includes the following. We have considered the addendum to the mitigated negative declaration for the commercial cannabis land use ordinance that was prepared for High Grade 007 LLC Conditional Use Permit, and find that the proposed project complies with the general plan and zoning ordinance, and approve the High Grade 007 LLC Conditional Use Permit and Special Permit, subject to the recommended conditions of approval. They're pretty much spelled out in my mind.
Great, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further comments from the commission before we proceed to a vote? Okay, then, Chip, could we have a roll call, please?
Ivor Scavdall.
Yes.
Brian Mitchell.
Yes.
Thomas Mulder.
Yes.
Melanie McCaver.
Yes.
Mike Newman.
Affirmative.
And Noah Levy.
Yes. So, the motion is, yeah, right there. Motion is approved, 6-0, approved unanimously. Great, okay, so that brings us to, and that was High Grade 007, just to be very clear. Now we move on to item G2. This is the Jesse Karnes Conditional Use Permit in the Maple Creek area. And I would welcome a staff report on this item, please.
Good evening Commissioners, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, Mr. Hilton, thank you.
Perfect. Well, as you know, my name is Max Hilton, and I'm presenting the Jesse Karnes Conditional Use Permit Project. This project was continued at the December 15th, 2022 meeting to conduct a site visit with the applicant and neighboring property owners, which has brought us here tonight. Okay, the proposed project is a conditional use permit for 22,000 square feet of existing outdoor cannabis cultivation. There are two cultivations on the site that will be referred to as the Upper Flat and the Lower Flat. Annual water use is 175,000 gallons, and water is provided by 700,000 gallon natural upstream pond. Water storage totals 715,000 gallons between the pond and three hard-sided tanks. Drying and processing activities will occur in existing structures located on the Upper Flat. Up to two people would be authorized onsite during peak operations, and currently, power is provided by two Honda generators. Additional detail will be provided later in this presentation on that. So the project is located in the Maple Creek area. Access to the site is via two driveways off of Black Creek Road, which traverses the site. site from Butler Valley Road. Butler Valley Road is maintained by the county and is included on the county's list of county-maintained roads that are approved for commercial cannabis use. This slide is showing a site plan of the cultivation areas to give you an idea. The pink outline shows the location of both cultivation areas on the subject parcel. The insets show the layouts of each flat. So going into some comments about the project. Planning staff met with the applicant and agent on Tuesday, December 27, 2022, to discuss the conditions of approval for the project. Concerns were raised regarding the conditions requiring an energy use plan, timber conversion report, and the limitations of the nursery space. Concerns expressed regarding the energy use plan were that not all projects have been subject to this requirement. Planning staff indicated this condition is applied to projects where generators are the primary power source to ensure the impacts from the project are less than significant, and health, safety, and welfare findings can be made. The applicant states brush clearing and removal of a dead, diseased, or dying tree occurred on the upper flat. However, there is no technical documentation on file to support this claim. Performance standards for the Commercial Medical Marijuana Land Use Ordinance, or CMMLUO, requires that any timber removal is evaluated, and a written report is submitted to the planning division containing the RPS recommendations as to remedial actions necessary to bring the conversion area into compliance with provisions of the Forest Practices Act. Additionally, because the mitigated negative declaration, or MND, for the CMMLUO prohibited any tree removal, the RFP report is required to evaluate any tree removal after January 1, 2016, and mitigate as necessary. Finally, the applicant is requesting two thousand two hundred and twenty square foot feet, excuse me, of propagation area in addition to the cultivation area of twenty-two thousand square feet. Because the property is zoned TPZ, new cultivation cannot be permitted. Therefore, planning staff is recommending the cultivation area and propagation space jointly do not exceed twenty-two thousand square feet, which was in existence prior to January 1, 2016. Planning staff explains this condition was consistent with what the planning commission has allowed for other projects. Therefore, planning staff does not recommend revisions of these conditions as currently written. Going into public comments, prior to December 15, 2022, planning commission hearing, public comments had been received from an adjacent property owner voicing several concerns. Planning staff attended a site visit on December 22, 2022, to view the site and meet with the neighboring property owners regarding their concerns. Written comments were submitted to the planning commission yesterday, and I'll briefly discuss the concerns expressed and how they've been addressed. First concerns were expressed regarding noise associated with the generator use. There are generators located on the upper flat for residential and cannabis use, and on the lower flat to power the water pump. The generator used on the upper flat is not located within a containment structure, and noise produced on the lower flat is associated with powering the water pump, so that generator down the lower flat. Conditions of approval require the generators to be contained, and noise from all sources cannot exceed fifty decibels at a hundred feet from the noise sources or edge of clearing, whichever is closer. Additionally, conditions of approval require the applicant to switch to eighty percent renewable energy as the primary energy source to support the project by the end of 2026. And condition of approval number 28 specifically requires power for the water pump to be from a renewable source by January 1, 2025. The applicant has applied for a grant to transition to renewable power, and these conditions are typically applied to cannabis projects to meet performance standards required by the CMMLUO. Concerns expressed regarding proximity to the Mad River floodplain, the lower flat is comprised of metal-framed hoop houses with garden beds, which are located within the one-hundred-year flood zone. All other structures and equipment associated with the operation, including generators and where fertilizers and amendments are stored, are generally located on the upper flat minus the generator for the water pump and outside of the flood zone. The proposed project will not store hazardous materials on the site that could be caused for environmental harm during a flooding event. There are no pesticides or herbicides used for the operation. There is a small amount of fuel storage on the upper flat in a shed that is required to have secondary containment. Plants are irrigated using drip irrigation to conserve water and decrease any runoff. A natural material is used to line the base of the beds to minimize soil and water loss. And an annual inspection was performed by the county staff on October 19, 2021, and it was noted each structure related to cannabis may need to conform to county flood elevation standards or be completely removed during the wet season. Conditions of approval require the hoop houses to be removed from the site between October 16 and April 14. Alternatively, the applicant can submit a flood elevation certificate to the building department. The applicant would need to meet any additional floodproofing requirements for the structures to remain. Going into concerns regarding the evaluation of cumulative effects. Cumulative effects of projects within Humboldt County were analyzed by the MND prepared for the CMLUO. The MND found that baseline conditions would be improved as historic operations would be regulated by state and local agencies. The project as designed and conditioned represents an improvement from baseline conditions, including discontinued use of a surface diversion in the Mad River and mixed light cultivation, removal of hoop houses on an annual basis or proper design to meet flood zone requirements, proper storage of fertilizers and amendments, and noise and light attenuation measures to reduce the potential impacts to biological resources. Concerns regarding maintenance of the road due to increased traffic to the subject parcel. Just to note, this permit would authorize a maximum of two people onsite. Staff was made aware that an adjacent property owner completes the annual road maintenance, and there's a fee associated with the work. The applicant has contributed to the RMA in the past and individually funded some of the improvements as well. Conditions of approval require the applicant to continue participating in the RMA and pay fair share costs associated with maintaining the roads. Concerns regarding potential impacts to wetlands in the lower flat were expressed. So an aquatic resource delineation was performed in December of 2021 to assess the subject site for wetlands and other aquatic resources. The report determined the lower flat is not riverine habitat and does not include wetlands as defined by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. This determination is consistent with the requirements of the streamside management and wetlands ordinance. During the site visit, no standing water or wetland plant species were observed near the cultivation area on the lower flat. The natural pond was identified in the report and depicts a one-hundred-foot setback from the pond, which is consistent with SMA WO wetlands ordinance there. And concerns regarding the size of the historic cultivation area were expressed to the staff. The applicant has an interim permit for eighteen thousand two hundred square feet of outdoor and three thousand eight hundred square feet of mixed light cultivation. The historic cultivation area is verified by the county staff prior to issuing the IP. For this project, the cultivation area was determined using aerial imagery for 2015. The review found that there was eighteen thousand two hundred square feet of cultivation and two of outdoor cultivation, excuse me, in two separate areas, and three thousand eight hundred square feet of mixed light cultivation on the upper flat. So this permit would authorize twenty-two thousand square feet of outdoor cultivation, which is consistent with the IP. Concerns were expressed regarding the frequency of site monitoring inspections to ensure operations are occurring as described by permit if authorized. A minimum of two inspections, one by state and one by county, occur annually, and additional inspections could occur based on outcomes of the annual inspections and/or complaints received. Finally, comments were received from the Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District. The comments were provided in October 2018, prior to the project revisions and additional technical information being provided for the project. The water source for the project is a natural pond that is not connected to the Mad River. No surface water diversion from the Mad River is authorized by this permit. Because the pond is naturally occurring and water is used on the same parcel where the pond is located, no appropriative water rights are required. Floodproofing or annual removal of structures is required by the conditions of approval, and fuel is stored outside of the flood zone. As previously stated, the MND found that baseline conditions would be improved as historic operations would be regulated by state and local agencies. Based on the project design, conditions of approval, and the site visit that occurred, planning staff is recommending approval of the Jesse Karns project. This concludes my presentation, and the applicant and agent are present at tonight's hearing. Planning staff is also available for questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hilkens. I appreciate you noting that the applicants and their agent are present, so I want to invite them if they would like to to before we get into public comment, I would like to invite them to start off with any presentation that they wished to make in addition to the staff presentation. Before and I see now that the agent's hand, I believe Tisha Machete is the agent, her hand is up, so I will let her go first. But before I do that, I just want to make sure, before we get to that, I just want to see if there are any questions from commissioners for on the staff report for Mr. Hilkens. Yes, Commissioner McCabber.
I just have a comment. I just wanted to tell Max that his report and presentation were highly competent.
Great. Any other comments? Yes, Commissioner Newman, please, excuse me.
Yes, I just wanted to ask staff, with the letter that was submitted by Mr. Webel, is there any comments about what was brought forth by this gentleman? Is it mostly true with comments? I was looking at one about the prior concern about the prior permit with a different permitting about extra people on the road and that sort of thing. Is that true?
Thank you, Commissioner Newman, for the question. I will do my best to respond, but my understanding of the situation is that it does appear the applicant may have hired a third party to operate at the site in previous years when under the interim permit. However, the applicant has stated they will not be moving forward in that manner.
Okay, and the other thing was about the encouragement of engaging public involvement before the hearings come about there. I just that'll be a side note there that I'd like to ask. I know we've talked about that before in the past, and maybe we could bring it forth again just in a brief moment with how things are brought forth and when the public is asked to be engaged.
Director.
If I could, I'm anticipating that's a discussion on reports later in the meeting.
Okay, sure, yeah. Did you have your hand up, Commissioner Scavdall?
Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge Matt's report and thank you for addressing the Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District concerns.
Thank you. And I see Commissioner Mulder's hand is also up. Go ahead, Thomas.
There are a couple of things. First off, with staff, I just wanted to clarify, I read that letter that was emailed to us yesterday. Was there any other supplemental information? I heard the director maybe mention that there was possibly supplemental information. Is there anything other than what was emailed yesterday?
The letter that I referenced is what was emailed yesterday.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. So I just want to make sure it's a hundred percent on the record. As a concern in that letter was traffic from employees and everything I'm reading and everything I heard staff present, if there is two employees allowed, what happens if there's documentation of four employees there under this current application?
So basically, what the commission is approving right now is what's within the project description and within the operations plan. If they exceed that, then that is not part of the approval. That would warrant a corrective action.
Thank you. I just I wanted to make sure that was on the record because I heard that as a concern. And then the other thing, I did note that there's also a household generator here. So I just want to clarify, from my understanding of Humboldt County code, the household generator, as most people that have no power right now, they can be very, very loud, and that's still legal. Is that correct or incorrect?
There are no regulations against the use of generators for households.
Okay, thank you. And then my last thing is I just want to clarify with the chair that are we going to offer that fifteen-minute presentation opportunity to I don't know if there's been, I'm not there in person, but have we talked about doing a handout to applicants or something like that?
Yes, I am going to invite the applicants or agents to make a presentation of up to fifteen minutes if necessary, but they will get to go first before we get to other public comment.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, before we get to that, any other questions or comments from commissioners? Okay. Yeah, I will then let's move on to that now. Do we have anyone in the audience? I heard Mr. Hilkens say that the applicant is here. That is that by any chance you? No, okay, not in the audience. I know we have Tisha Machete, the agent, on the phone or on Zoom, and her hand is now up, so I will recognize her. And Ms. Machete, you are welcome as the applicant's agent to make a presentation, you know, ten or fifteen minutes if you if you need that long, you are welcome to go go ahead.
Thank you to the chair. Thank you, commissioners, for hearing this project tonight. We're excited to get this wrapped up. We worked pretty closely with Megan on getting all of the neighboring complaints and concerns addressed. It sounds like maybe they aren't entirely happy with the whole process. I don't I think we can all agree that there's some room for refinement, but we're in agreement with all of the changes that have been made. The only thing I would ask is that there is some discussion and consideration for allowing that ten percent propagation on top of the twenty-two thousand. I understand this process has evolved over the years, and you know, there's been limiting areas. However, you know, we're not talking about additional area that needs to be developed. This is already a developed area, and we are going to be working within the confines of that. So that is an argument that we'd like to make for that ten percent propagation.
Okay. Ms. Machete, was there anything else you wanted to bring up? Or and are you available for questions from the commission?
Yes, I am, and I apologize, I'm not sure if it got cut off there. There was a call coming through at the same time.
It did just cut out for a couple of seconds, but you're good now, so.
Okay, good. Yeah, I was just I was just arguing for the ten percent on top of the twenty-two thousand that as we're not developing any additional area. I know that this has been a topic that's been brought up many times between, you know, how CDFW sees baseline and, you know, what baseline really means. So I'm hoping we can entertain that conversation. I know the applicant is here tonight. He was hoping he wouldn't have to speak, but you know, if it comes down to it, we need any additional clarifying questions answered. I'm sure we could get him on for that.
Okay, got it. Thank you for clarifying that, that he's on Zoom, but he doesn't wish to speak unless he needs to answer a question.
Yeah, he's hoping that I'll be able to address anything here.
Okay, well, if I may go ahead and just ask one question directly, because it's already come up in a couple of the comments that commissioners have made. Now, when I read this letter from Judy Whartella and Eric Wybell, the neighbors, yesterday, I thought it spoke actually to a process that seemed to work really well here, and so I kind of want to commend all sides, the staff, the applicant. Sounds like these concerns came up prior to December 15 meeting. Staff recommended that we continue the item and then scheduled a visit the next week at which the applicant and the neighbor and planning staff were present. And from my read, this letter seems to say that their concerns were largely addressed. The one point that I wanted to just hone in on, though, that I think a couple of other commissioners have referenced is there is one, a couple of sentences in this letter that says about the number of employees that would be present. And I'll just quote from these two sentences. Megan explained that the project description approved for the permit indicates that two people maximum are allowed during peak operation, which would typically be Jesse and one other person at the site on both the top and the bottom. During the site visit, Jesse expressed that he could have as many visit, Jesse expressed that he could have as many workers as he wanted on his property to complete any job that he needs done." I just wanted to ask you if you could perhaps, I know this is the neighbor's letter, uh, so it's sort of quoting second or secondhand what was said, but, um, do you think there's any disagreement from the applicant with the notion that this permit would allow two employees, you know, with, for, for the cultivation operations to be present during operations?
I would really like the applicant to address that because I was not present during that inspection. And, you know, I know that this contention goes back a long ways, so I'm sure there's a little bit of haste there.
Okay, if.
Can we invite, can we invite him to try to participate?
Yes, he just raised his hand, so, um, so sure, could we, could we go ahead and let Jesse speak then? Thank you.
Hello, sorry, I was on mute there.
No problem, we can hear you now. Thank you for being willing to chime in on this one point.
Um, so that point that you were talking about, um, in our meeting, um, what I was referring to when I replied that to them was basically, they don't really have the right to be telling me what I can or can't do on my property as far as people coming on my property other than the farm. I totally 100% understand that there's only two people that are going, going to be operating the farm, but as far as other things going on my property, they, they don't have the right to be telling me what I can and cannot do. That's, that's what that was all about.
Thank you. I, I actually kind of suspected that was the case because there's a residence here as well, correct?
Yes, I, I've lived here for almost 40 years.
So there are, there may be other things that come up, any other number of workers you may need to have working on the house or the property for other purposes that are not the cannabis cultivation's operation. But I just wanted to make sure that we were all clear about what the number of employees, uh, for the cannabis operation is allowed. And it sounds like you're confirming that, that you do. Um, any other commissioners, before we go to other public comment, I just want to see if any other commissioners have questions for the applicant or the agent? No? Okay, well then, thank you, um, Mr. Carnes, thank you, Ms. Machete, um, and I will go now to public comments. I see, uh, public 7454, I believe that's Mr. Swatsky. Go ahead, it's your three minutes, sir.
Again, I'd like to chime in. I appreciate, uh, staff and the neighbors all getting together. That's frequently a good thing. And, uh, regarding Mr. Mulder's comment, yes, it's unfortunate. Hopefully, the state soon will be moving in a, in a statewide measure, all generators that, uh, are used have to fall within certain guidelines as far as noise containment and safety issues. Uh, it'd be unfortunate, you know, when a generator's misused. I'm not saying Mr. Carnes did it all, he's been there 40 years, probably knows about that. But I encourage everybody out there to go ahead and, and make your generators safe and, in a, in a manner you don't bother your neighbors with. My main concern on this one, uh, and a little clarity on this, I think everything else is pretty well been ironed out, is the hoop houses are to be removed during a certain time of the year. Uh, one of the biggest problems that we've had in the Mad River, and I didn't get a chance to speak with, uh, John Friedenbach with Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District on this particular project, but we have a real problem with algae blooms. And a lot of people feel these algae blooms are contributed to, uh, to nitrogen coming into the river. Uh, it seems to be something that, uh, happened after things kind of blew up here, the big green rush and all this happened. Uh, so my question is, not only do the hoop houses need to be moved, but any form of nitrogen that would be in soils, it sounds like you had barriers below this so it wouldn't leach further than your soils. But are the soils to be removed that might have nitrogen in those soils? Um, I think that's a relevant question. I think that, not speaking for Humboldt Bay Water Municipal District, but I think that's one of all of our biggest concerns. People of us who enjoy the recreation in the Mad River, uh, are not safe having dogs down in the river, not safe having family members down the rivers during certain times of year. Anything we can do to minimize, uh, the nitrogen that does come into the river, I think is, uh, protecting the public health, safety, and welfare. So I don't know, I give clarity on that, and I think there should be a condition that any, anything that would have any residual nitrogen in it should also be removed out of the floodplain during the same time as the hoop houses. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Okay, um, I see another hand up, um, public 7108. Uh, you are recognized and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Um, good evening. I just had one question. Um, you talked about having a meeting. I'm wondering whether there was an annual onsite inspection during the 2022 year. Um, so that's my question. Seems like there was a lot of conditions in, and just wondering about, uh, if the county had their annual inspection open. So, thank you.
Okay, um, are there any other members of the audience wishing to comment on this item? I, uh, and, um, if they wanted to or needed to, I just want to, um, confirm that per our guidelines, the applicant or their agent could chime in again to respond to comments that have been made or questions that have been asked. Um, if you wish, you could do that. Yes, Ms. Machete, go ahead, you could speak again.
I just wanted to speak to Ms. Blackberry's comment. Um, there was a, a site inspection conducted at the end of last year, um, to address any neighboring concerns as well as conduct, uh, a site inspection to conform with the project description. Um, as far as the materials to be removed, that is not something that came up in our conversation. And, you know, I'm not exactly sure how the commission wants to address that. Um, we are looking at retrofitting the steel frame greenhouses, so those do not have to be removed. Um, so yeah, I'll leave that, leave that for discussion.
Okay. Seeing no further comments, and if there's no further questions from the, well, the commission can keep discussing this, but, uh, if there's no further hands up in the public, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment. And now bring it back to the commission and the staff for further discussion. Did you have your hand up? Yeah. Commissioner McCavver?
Uh, thank you. Yes, I'm, I'm satisfied that it appears that there's a less insignificant impact on the environment. Um, I thought that the, the visit and the extra few weeks was really helpful. Um, and I think we should stick with the staff recommendation and, and not increase the amount of growing space.
Sure. Um, Commissioner Newman?
Thank you.
And I think the staff recommendations that have been written, um, too, I, I recommend, I understand those, they've been vetted, and I believe too that they are, um, well-done and, um, appropriate for this site. Uh, however, I do have that concern about the number of employees and traffic and that sort of thing. And I would ask, um, staff again about, um, for verification, if, um, a neighbor were to say that there were extra employees there, uh, how would we go about verifying, um, those records, uh, as employees or, uh, workers for other projects being done on that property?
So the first thing we would do is, is call and talk to the applicant, let them know that, uh, there has been concern expressed that they have more employees going to and from the site than they're allowed to have. And, uh, look for an explanation first, an understanding of what's been going on. It may be that there was somebody there working on the house. And, uh, so if there's a reasonable, rational information, we would, uh, close the investigation into that at that point. If we find that, uh, there's not a good reason or that there's a difficulty, uh, identifying what the problem is, we, we would do some monitoring, do some additional work to, uh, verify whether or not there are more employees working there than are allowed. That may involve a site visit, that may involve, uh, different things that, uh, we can do to, uh, make that determination. If it is found out, found that they, um, are in violation of their project description, then we would notify them formally that that's a violation of their project, their permit, and, uh, continued, uh, violation of that can result in action against the, uh, the permit. And, uh, if it continues and goes unabated, and we've not had one get to this point yet, hopefully we never do, uh, then it could be subject to revocation.
Very good, very good. And payroll records would probably be one of the verifications as well, I'm certain of that. Um, thank you very much there, I appreciate that.
Great, good question. Um, Commissioner Mulder, go ahead.
All right, um, so this one, I'm gonna, through the chair, ask a question, hypothetical question back to the employee count. So the way I read it is they can have two employees a day, but technically, they could possibly have 10 employees working for them, but only two employees show up every day for five, you know, five days out of the week. Is that still within the confines of the permit? Is that, that's how I read it, and I just want to make sure I read it correctly.
As, as it is written, the limit is specified to, um, at time onsite. So two employees at a time, uh, working onsite for the day. And so theoretically, uh, there would be the potential, uh, if Jesse had, um, say, uh, a brother working onsite on Tuesday and gave his employee that he regularly have throughout the week off, so there's still only two people working onsite, uh, in regards to the commercial operation, uh, then that would be how that could be handled, uh, while still maintaining a, an actual employee outside of that. Um, but yes, the, as written, it's two employees, uh, working at a time, uh, for commercial activities.
Thank you. And I, I read that as per day because it, uh, under land use, we're looking at the vehicle, uh, daily vehicle trips or, um, so that's the way I'm reading it. So thank you for that clarification. And just lastly, I wanted to point out, um, I don't know if everyone read, and make sure it's on the record, Condition 18, the very end of it, I think it's A18, "No generator use is authorized by this permit until the applicant can just demonstrate compliance with this standard. In addition to fire resistant materials shall be utilized for construction of the generator containment." So basically, they gotta have generator containment and be under 50, 50 decibels. So, once the appeal process, so 10 days from, 10 business days from today, if this goes forward, then technically no generator use is allowed for the cultivation. Is that, that's correct, as it's written?
Thank you, Commissioner Mulder, yes. Thanks for pointing that out.
I just wanted to make sure it's on the record, so that way, you know, everyone present knows what we're voting on, and also the applicant knows what their conditions are. So that's, that's all my questions. I feel staff did a good job at listening to concerns and writing conditions of approval to try to help mitigate those concerns while still allowing the applicant to move forward with their project.
Thank you. Commissioner McCavver?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, my interpretation was that this was based on, uh, transportation, uh, vehicular traffic. And, and so, you know, the number of employees, I don't, I don't really find concerning. It's that it be limited to two vehicles. And, you know, if anything, aren't we trying to encourage more employment within fewer vehicles? So I don't, I don't really see an issue, uh, with that personally, or with the code.
Okay. Commissioner Newman?
I, I would like to go back to that. Um, I'm trying to find that again here in the recommendations, um, or in the staff report. Can that be pointed out to me where the recommendation about the two employees, uh, is in the staff recommendations?
Or is it in the conditions of approval explicitly?
The, um, the employee limited, the employees limited at two are part of the project description. Therefore, not necessarily, you know, your condition to adhere to your project description or operations plan.
Okay, so, on that project description, usually the owner is not considered an employee. Is in this situation, they're considered an employee, or?
Uh, I would agree that, that owner, I don't typically consider the owner an employee, so I would consider two in addition to the property owner. What the applicant has indicated to us is that really operations will be mostly fulfilled by him and one other person.
So, and I mean, we, I'm looking for the explicit language, but essentially, we're, we're concerned with number of workers, whether it is, you know, applicant, owner, and an employee, or two employees, or, or two members of the family as it might be. But the number of workers is what's at issue here, right? And I, and I think the project description essentially says there will be two at a time. Is, is that correct? It would be good to make clear that we have that explicit language, um, to be able to sort of lay eyes on it, though.
So to, to do that, to provide the clarity through the chair, if I could.
Yes, Director.
I think that we could probably best resolve this discussion with a additional condition.
Okay.
Just to identify that, um, that the, uh, permit is approved to have two people working, a maximum of two people working at the site. It can be the owner, operator, and one other employee, or two employees.
That, yes, Commissioner McCavver?
I have a question. So the, the spirit of this was to limit vehicular traffic to two vehicles a day, right?
Uh, I'm, I'm not sure that there was this, there was, I don't know what the applicant intended when they put that into their project description. That's what we evaluated.
Right. I, I believe it was concerns with the number of vehicles based on neighboring, um, input. And so if that's the case.
Well, I also saw some other things there, where there was other, there was a lot of employees going back and forth. It's hard in a rural environment when you have a lot of new cars, strange cars, different cars on the road, traversing the road every day to know where they're from. And so part of the concern there is just having a settled understanding of who it is that's on the road.
Okay, so, yeah, I just feel like there definitely needs to be more specificity then. Uh, and could it be such that it's two employees arriving to the property, or did you mean to have it read such that that could just be the people living there?
Well, I think one of the things that's really important in context to understand is that, you know, we don't regulate people, we regulate an activity. And so what the activity has proposed is that there would be the operator and one other employee. Well, if the operator's not there and they hire somebody to operate it for them, and, but they're consistently there and one other employee is there, there's two people there, I think that's the spirit of, of what's being asked for here. And, and so to keep it simple but flexible enough to, to not require a modification to the permit, or to, uh, result in a violation of the permit if, if, uh, for whatever reason, the, uh, operator assigns to somebody else to manage it for them, and there's two employees there rather than him, then I, I, I would just offer that. That's all I was thinking.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
I see Commissioner Mitchell's hand is up. So go ahead, Commissioner.
To attempt a motion, is that acceptable, Mr. Chairman?
Sure, but if you wouldn't mind just holding off, I, I, since we are, I think, trying to, we're adding a, we're proposing a new condition, which I think is addressing concerns that have been raised, and I think is also consistent with the intentions that have been expressed by the applicant. Um, but in the spirit of, you know, not surprising them with a new condition that's problematic, I would actually invite the applicant or their agent, if they would like to just chime. I would actually invite the applicant or their agent, if they would like to just chime in very briefly, to confirm that they would be okay with this additional condition proposed by the director, clarifying that, that we would have, that we would limit it to two workers at a time on the cannabis operation. If they wish. And yes, I see you've got your hand up, so.
I would, I would again encourage Jesse to speak on this, because I really think it's important that he weigh on, in on this. But, I mean, I, I, I see, you know, how we wanna move forward with this, we wanna just come up with something that makes everyone happy here. But, you know, the spirit of limiting the amount of people was to mitigate neighboring concerns about traffic. And so, I don't think that we really explored the depth of this. Personally, I have to agree with Melanie, that, you know, in, in trying to mitigate traffic, I think that if there was a car, carpooling, because there are gonna be times of the year where there could be more people needed, at least for harvesting operations. And that's just my honest two cents, you know, from my, my knowledge of the industry and how things work, you know, there's unexpected surprises and rains that come in, and sometimes you have to act fast. So, I would like to see us get this resolved, I mean, maybe make an exception at during peak use, you know, limit cars to two vehicles per day, any event that there needs to be an emergency work crew brought in.
Okay. I saw Jesse had his hand up a moment ago, but he took it down, so. Well, okay, yeah, Mr. Carnes, go ahead, since I invited your input, go ahead and speak on this, if you would.
Yeah, I mean, I'm willing to, if you guys need to change things to appease the neighbors and stuff, that's fine with me. I've always only had two people working here at a time, so it shouldn't be a problem for me at all.
Okay, thanks, and that's what I thought, and I just thought we should clarify that. So I appreciate your chiming in. Commissioner Scavdell.
Yep. Chair Levy, I just wanna point out, in the, the draft resolution presented to us by staff, the first whereas, says a maximum of two people may be on-site during peak operations. So.
Great.
While it's in the resolution, as a part of the project description, do we actually have to add another condition? Probably not.
Thank you for clarifying, for finding that. I thought I had.
And that's what I was looking for from staff, to find out where that was exactly. So, thank you.
Appreciate, good job. And yes, then let's just stick with what's already in it, since it is right there in the resolutions, very clearly. Okay. And now, Commissioner Mitchell, back to you. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to move that we adopt a resolution, which does the following, A, finds that the planning commission has considered the addendum to the mitigated negative declaration for the CMMLO that was prepared for the Jesse Karnes conditional use permit, and B, finds that the proposed project complies with the general plan and zoning ordinance, and C, approves the Jesse Karnes conditional use permit, subject to the recommended conditions of approval.
I'll second.
Great. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? Okay, then I will go ahead and call for a vote. Trip, if you could call for a roll call, please.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Melanie McCavver?
Yes.
And Iver Scavdell?
Yes.
Great. Motion passes unanimously, so the Jesse Karnes conditional use permit is approved 6-0.
Chair Levy, can I request a brief break?
Sure. Yes, it is that time. I will go ahead and declare a recess of up to 10 minutes, if we need it. Thank you. Do we need to reconvene?
Recording in progress.
We are coming back into session now, after that recess. And, that brings us now to, well, we've moved speedily through the old business section. That now brings us to item F on the agenda, which is items pulled from consent. And there were three items tonight that were pulled from consent for discussion. The first one being, the item number two, review and approval of December 15, 2022 action summary. Hey Josh, I don't seem to be, oh no, I am, sorry, I'm promoted here. Yeah, I just wanted to be able to see if there are any hands up, or is Commissioner Mulder in the room? Yes, he is there. I don't see him on the screen, though. I'm looking for him, because he was the one who pulled this item for discussion.
Yeah, he's here.
He's in Zoom, but his camera's off, so he might have left the room for a moment.
Chair, I would recommend that we trail this.
Yeah.
And come back to it.
Okay, sure. Let's go ahead and trail this, and go to item six, Earth Green Cali Farms. This was pulled for discussion, well, by a member of the public, who had a question about this item. I believe that was Mr. Sawatsky. And so, Mr. Sawatsky, I would, I will open this for public discussion, and recognize you for your comments or questions about this item.
Thank you, Noah. Am I audible now?
You are audible, sir.
Thank you. I pulled this one partly because we have the same thing with a groundwater well. We have the same engineer involved in this, and, and I, I don't wanna misspeak, but I think your new member referred to him as a hydrological engineer, but that's not his title. And just so the public and the commissioners are aware, there have been some discussions regarding some of the determinations, including one in which Steve Supervisor Steve Madrona of the 5th District, had major disagreements with this particular individual regarding hydrological connectivity. Again, this, to me, is somewhat troublesome. I believe, I could be corrected if this is incorrect, but the same person is the only person who's going around, I understand he's no longer doing this, this is one of the projects, probably they're still in the queue from before, but we are looking at, you know, an estimated water usage of 540,000 gallons, with a proposed storage, I believe, of 78,400. And I don't know, it might be nice to see a map, see if we could maybe get a well report, that's about the same thing, maybe we have the same thing with a drawing that will dispute, or at least make all of us comfortable with this not be hydrologically connected. I did want to also comment on, on, on the comments regarding the, by Melanie made, regarding employees, or trips in and things. So here you have a maximum of seven employees. Technically, during peak season, is that full-time equivalent, seven employees? Or is that people who would be on-site? In other words, technically, you could have seven employees coming in for three shifts a day, which is 21 trips onto the site, times seven days a week during peak, you're ending up with a heck of a lot of potential traffic. And if traffic's a concern, I think you do need a definition of, of that, whether this is full-time equivalents, in other words, an average of eight or 10-hour days, and just one per day? Or how many people are you allowing under your permits? A lot of these areas, again, are areas where they're on generators, they are off on roads, the neighbors have problems with a lot of traffic happening, and I, I don't know if this is one of those or not, but, but it, it is a concern, it's been brought up many times by the neighbors, and a lot of times have been kind of ignored, in my opinion. So, those are the concerns that I have on this one. I think we had, I think there was a, a, John and I probably talked about, I think, long-term plans to connect to PG&E isn't what's happening. I, I think that there was something that's to be converted, I don't know if it's 80%, but I'd also like to have clarity for you folks and the public to know exactly when we're gonna get off the, the, see, solar power and two backup gen, okay. So, so it is solar power, but they're going to PG&E. So, anyway, I find that interesting, but thank you for opportunity to comment on this particular project.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public wishing to comment on this one? I do see another hand up, so I will recognize you, Ms. Blackberry, go ahead, it's your three minutes.
Hi, thank you. I just had some questions, 'cause I'm looking at the resolution and the executive summary about the numbers, and the size and stuff. And then I go over to the cultivation and operations plan, and it has another set of numbers. And it's talking about 43,560 square feet of outdoor cultivation, and one special permit for wholesale nursery. And, and they mentioned later on, in the cultivation thing, on page nine, their planet schedule of, gonna have 20,000, 29,200 square feet of full sun, 9,024 of light depth, and, and 4,320 of immature plants for cultivation, and then wholesale nursery plant, two greenhouses for a total of 5,000 square feet. So, it doesn't seem like the cultivation and operations plan is really connected with the project description and all that.
Hmm.
And that's a bit problematic. And the thing with the wells, the county's looking at impacts of 1,000 feet, that's how far out they're going, and water travels a long way. But, yeah, so that was, you know, it'd be nice to have the cultivation and operations plan reflecting what the.
Okay, you sort of trailed off there at the end, Bonnie, but I think, I think we got your point. Thank you for bringing that up, that's, that's useful to, to point out. Are there any other members of the public, or, if I may ask, since I've opened public comment, actually, or, well, I don't see any, are there any other members of the public wishing to comment on this, before I bring it back to the discussion, to the commissioners for discussion? Excuse me. Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment. Director, yes?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment a little bit on a couple things, particularly that the last public speaker brought up.
Yeah, thank you.
Is that, it's highly possible, and sometimes likely, that there will be inconsistencies between what an applicant applies for, and what's being approved.
Right.
So what's being approved is then written into the project description of the resolution, because, and, and I wanna take some time for the commission to really understand this, too, because that's really your document, saying this is what we understand that we're doing, this is what we're approving. And so, the project description in there has oftentimes been amended from what the applicant applied for, because perhaps we couldn't approve the amount of cultivation, pre-existing cultivation that they had, and so that's been modified, refined, there may be some things that don't comply with the ordinance, there may be some things that just can't be approved. And so, the project description in the resolution reflects all that. And, and so, I, I want that to be really clear. And then, the second thing about wells and 1,000 feet, one of the things that I don't think is being given credit for, is that the hydrogeologists that we've been working with, provided us a checklist, a set of guidelines, of what should be in a geologic, geo, geologic report, and that is what this geologist follows, is that checklist. And, and so, going out to 1,000 feet, is what the hydrogeologists that, that we're working with, recommended be done. So that wasn't some arbitrary number that this geologist came up with, that's something that has been recommended by somebody that's actually working for the county, in order to provide a, a safe level of determination, safe discretion.
Great. Thank you for clarifying that. And I think it's great that you, I really appreciate your clarifying the, the answer to Bonnie's question about consistency with the cultivation and operations plan, because of course, things do get changed, they don't always get what they ask for, or, you know, and, and while in an ideal world, I think it's true, that the document that we have here, that says it's the cultivation plan, should reflect the final numbers, it, it can't always be updated to bring it in line with those changes that have been made towards the end of the process. So I think it's great that, that you remind us to, the, the staff report, and the conditions associated with it, and so forth, the resolution, those are the key documents that define the project. If I may, though, ask a follow-up question to a point that was raised by, or a question that was asked by Mr. Sawatsky. I actually, I read the Lindbergh geologic report, I am satisfied by his analysis of the question of hydrologic connectivity, but what he is not speaking to in that report is the question of well yield. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but I did.
It's 40.
Okay, well.
It's in the well.
In the well completion log, yes. I, I saw that it was there, but I just wanted to, to note that I don't think it was called out in the staff report itself, but we do have the well completion log that says 40 gallons per minute. So I just wanted to ask staff, is that what the, was that the basis for their determination that the well would be sufficient for the, for the water use demand?
That was part of it.
Okay. Okay.
Yes, the 40 gallons per minute was evaluated both from the well completion report, it's, again, referenced on page four of the hydrologic evaluation report as well.
Okay, yes, thank you. Okay, thank you for pointing that out there, I missed that. But okay, I just wanted to, to make sure that we understood what the basis was, 'cause it is, it is a lot that it is, the well is being asked to provide for this project. Commissioner Mulder, I see your hand is up.
So, in the hydrological report, I heard something about a map, and I did find, I don't know if this page, in the hydrological report, that shows the type of soil, I guess, or, just noting that that was in there, it's not numbered, it says figure, figure five of the hydrological report, just showing that that's in there. And then I wanted to elaborate on, there was some public comment about inconsistencies, and I just wanna ask a clarifying question through the chair to staff, of my understanding of the process. An applicant can have an operations plan, I can say all kinds of things about water use and employees and stuff like that, and then, are they still allowed to just do, you can do an, from my understanding, you can do an addendum to an operations plan, which would still have your original operations plan, but there would be a follow-up addendum that says your water use is now X, and your employee count is Y, and I'm just trying to elaborate why there's inconsistency sometimes, because applicants can still do addendums via a small, one-page document, or one paragraph document, is that correct or incorrect?
I, I think fundamentally, that is correct, that often, an applicant will amend their original submittal with an addendum, or, or some kind of subsequent document. We often include a condition to have those revised, to put into one document, so we don't have miscellaneous documents floating around that need to be tracked. The other thing that will happen is that sometimes we'll work with an applicant, the applicant will agree to a condition, or agree that their project description will be something different, and that's what is, then is reflected in the staff recommendation.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Any other questions from, or comments from the commission about this item? Any other questions from, or comments from the commission about this item? All right, well, do we want to go ahead and move forward?
Yes. Yes, I propose to move adoption of Resolution 231789, which does the following. Finds that the planning commission is considered the addendum to the adopted mitigated negative declarations for the CMMLUO that was prepared for Evergreen Cali Farms project. And find that the proposed project complies with the general plan and zoning ordinance. And approve the conditional use permit subject to recommended conditions of approval.
Terrific, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the project as recommended by staff. Any further discussion? Okay, then Trip, I would go ahead and ask for a roll call vote.
Noah Levy.
Yes.
Iris Scavdal.
Yes.
Brian Mitchell.
Yes.
Thomas Mulder.
Yes.
Mike Newman.
Yes.
And Melanie McAver.
Yes.
Great, so the Earth Green Cali project passes unanimously, is approved unanimously. Let's go ahead and move to the item seven that was pulled from consent. And then we will come back to item two, which we skipped over at the beginning of this section. But yes, so once again, item seven was the Dave Thomas conditional use permit and special permits in the Honeydew area. It was pulled for discussion by Mr. Sawatsky. So I see your hand is up, sir. I will go ahead and invite your comment on this item now.
So one of the reasons that I pulled this particular one, in fact, the main one, was the comments made by BLM on this matter. I could be corrected, but I think that that letter should be addressed, the initial letter. There was a follow-up letter, which I was told was kind of on the limp side. But the initial one kind of represented a lot of concerns of us out there. It sounds like you're reducing the setback from public lands. And it's alleged that there is no spotted owl within a certain distance, this, then the other. But this 40 acres of BLM land, in my understanding, is one of the few remaining old growth fir forests around of this kind of quality and obviously being preserved by the BLM. I suggest that on a 40-acre parcel, if I recall this one, they should be able to cite this somewhere outside of that setback of 600 feet. And I really don't think this is the kind of place where you should do a reduction. And of course, there may no longer be owls there. This is an existing one, but it's the habitat we're looking at, you know. It's a very unique habitat. And I would strongly suggest that somebody ask the director to read the initial letter. I think it was by, oh, was it Holly or Heidi? Anyway, the person who wrote this initial letter showing the concerns of the BLM on this. The other problem I have with this one is that, again, this is kind of a staged one. You have two existing things that are sharing, just sharing water, I think. The water supply is shared. You have two permits that should have come through, in my opinion, and been assessed cumulatively. That always is bothersome when I see things being piecemealed as far as these kind of things go. And again, that's a question for staff. I did wish to make a comment regarding the consistency of the operating plan and the things on all these projects. If there are changes, then those operating plans should be changed after the fact so that they do align. I don't see any excuse for not having that totally clear. And then the problem I consistently have is I see no reason why a project should come before you and be noticed to the public in the paper or other forms of notification and not be the project brought before you. As you're aware, multiple times, we've had even applicants come in and say, "Well, what you're reading here isn't what we're doing." There seems to be a dysfunction between that. But the public notification has to be accurate. I can understand maybe a few small little changes at the end. But when you see somebody say, "Well, that's not the project that's actually coming before you," that's very troublesome for those of us who wish to pay attention to these projects. Thank you for your opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public wishing to comment on this at this time? Or yes, Commissioner Mulder, yeah. Is that, yeah, Commissioner Mulder, go ahead.
Have you closed public comment, Chair? I'm just waiting for you to be...
Well, I will go ahead and close public comment. We're sort of doing this a little differently because we didn't have a staff presentation. But since we did have one member of the public, and I don't see any other hands up, I will go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the commission. And we can decide if we want a staff report, a full staff report or not.
Okay, thank you. Since you closed public comment, can I make a few comments there, Chair?
Go ahead.
So the public commenter, under my interpretation, is talking about a letter from BLM on page 172, which is the very end of the paper packet I'm seeing. And their concerns are concerns for light, generator noise, runoff, and rodenticide. And I just want to clarify through the chair to staff. The current ordinance has mitigation measures to deal with all four of those potential impacts. Is that correct or incorrect?
That's correct.
So thank you for that. That's my only note there, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Mulder. Commissioner Mitchell, I believe you asked at one point on a different item if this was, is this one that you wanted to make a comment or ask a question about?
Well, I just wanted to have staff clarify whether or not the public comments regarding this being a special type of old growth fir or forest were accurate or not. I don't recall reading that in the letter, but I may be looking at the wrong letter. It sounds like there were multiple letters from BLM, or that's what's being claimed. So can you stop commenting on that, please?
Yeah, the letter we received from the BLM is basically stating that they don't have the project at hand, but they believe it's very similar to another one. And they attached that letter for the other project. And so it would be good to get clarification regarding the 600-foot setback because that was one of the things that the BLM asked about. But that may well be in reference to the other project because they did state that the letter was in reference to another project.
So staff, would you like to speak to this question of, because yes, there was, there was a little bit confusing the way those, the BLM email referenced a letter that had been written about another project.
I will state that conditions were added based on the BLM's concern about the northern spotted owl requiring noise and light attenuation, where they typically may not have been added. But based on the, based on the comments of the BLM, even though it is two miles away, the cultivation area is two miles away from the nearest NSO Activity Center, those conditions were added anyway.
Thank you.
And I will clarify Commissioner McAver's understanding of the comments is accurate. That when we, we did not see the response to comments on this. We reached out to the BLM and they said this is near a project where we've already provided comments. So the letter is for the parcel directly to the south. And the BLM parcel is to the southwest of the project site. So I could pull up the web GIS if that would be helpful to just kind of show what that looks like.
Sure, that'd be helpful.
Okay, great. So if you can see my cursor, project site located here in the center. The letter was regarding the project parcel to the south. And this shaded green is the public lands. So the majority of the operation occurs away from the public lands, but there are these two greenhouses here that are within that 600-foot setback.
Thank you. And was the, just since you're giving us the context for this comment from BLM, did you say, Ms. Ryan, that this particular comment, that Dave, this particular project, the Dave Thomas project, did not initially get a response from BLM until you reached out to them and sought their comment or additional comment?
Yes, yes, that's correct. The project was originally referred to the BLM earlier. I'd have to check what the year it was, but in April of '21 or '22. And then moving into October, when we were doing the staff work, we reached out to say, "We see that we referred to you, but we have not received comments." So just to follow up with them.
Okay, thanks, that's helpful as well. I mean, I don't want to read too much into this beyond what's on the record. But I don't personally take from the comments that are in the record here, the email from Jennifer Wheeler, the, I don't take from that the general opinion of BLM that they are, that they're not satisfied with the conditions that are attached to this project. So, but was there any, there was no additional communication by phone? There's nothing more to tell us about the communication with them other than the email that's in the record here? I guess that's my question.
Yeah, correct. No additional comments were received, nor were there any additional phone calls.
Thank you. Commissioner McAver, did you want to speak again?
Yeah, I was just going to ask that that be clarified for the public, that the 600-foot setback and whether it was for another project or this one. So thank you.
Okay. Well, we didn't get a full staff report, but I don't know that we need one. Since this issue was brought up, that was the main issue that the member of the public pulled it. And we've now had some back and forth with staff about it. So are there any other questions or concerns from the commission about this project? Nope. Okay, well, oh wait, I see a hand up there. Yes, Commissioner Mulder.
I'm very confused the applicant isn't in person or on Zoom. Just wanted to make sure, we just threw that out there, that's the only...
Sure, no, you're right, no. In fact, because of the, because we need to get a little bit clearer on the process. I guess I, as the chair, need to get slightly better about how we handle this because we didn't do this as we normally do with a staff report and then invite the applicant to comment. We just took the hand, we basically just had public comment from the person who had pulled it for discussion. But in fact, I am going to reopen public comment. And thank you, Commissioner Mulder, because I want to, since we've had some discussion, I want to invite the applicant or their agent to respond to the discussion we've had. So I see Holly Carter, the agent's hand is up, but I also see public 89831. I don't know if that is the applicant themselves, but I'm going to go ahead and invite public 9831 to speak. And please identify yourself and whether you are the applicant.
Hello, that's me, a second.
Sorry, we've got a severe echo with... If you could turn off the sound on your device, if you've got the computer on, or, and then go ahead and speak, because you're on the phone. Can we try that again?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, that's much better, and we can hear you.
Okay, this is Holly Carter, and I was both watching, listening, and on the phone.
Oh, got it.
Because it's so much easier to hear on the phone. I sounded so much better, although not when I do something like that wackiness. So I just wanted to tell Mr. Mulder and the rest of the commission that both Dave Thomas and I have been listening and we've been texting. And so like Megan addressed the concern from Mr. Sawatsky quite well. If there's any other questions or concerns, we are here.
Thank you so much. And I apologize that I didn't earlier invite you to speak up on behalf of this project. Is there anything else you wanted to...
No, that was okay. And I could have popped in during public comment and said just that we're here, but I didn't want to like take the commission's time, so.
Okay, all good, all right, well...
Let me just back my text and be like, "Dave, you got anything? I think we're good."
Before I close public comment again, I just want to see if any member of the commission does have any additional question for, for the applicant or their agent, Holly Carter. No, okay, then I think we are good. And we'll...
Thank you all for the opportunity, thank you.
Thank you for being there to answer questions if we had any. Okay, and with that, I will go ahead and close public comment again and just bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Newman.
I just want to ask a point of order. That's not opening public comment, is it? We're asking the applicant. So I don't want it to be perceived that we're reopening public comment.
You're absolutely right. I need to get my terms a little bit more precise. On that point, I'm using my discretion as chair to direct a particular question to the applicant or their agent outside of the public comment period. So you're right, I didn't have to open, reopen public comment, as I said. Thanks for helping me get this, get this right. All right, well, if we have no further questions or concerns, is anyone interested in perhaps making a motion on this one?
I've got my mic on. I guess I can go ahead and make a motion.
Okay.
That the planning commission adopt Resolution 231791, file number 221791, which does the following. Finds that the planning commission is considered the addendum to the adopted mitigated negative declaration for the CMMLUO that was prepared for the Dave Thomas project. And find that the proposed project complies with the general plan and zoning ordinance. And approve the conditional use permit and special permits subject to the recommended conditions of approval.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion of this motion before we call for a vote? All right, seeing none, then I would invite you to take a roll call, Mr. Giannini.
Iris Scavdal.
Yes.
Noah Levy.
Yes.
Thomas Mulder.
Yes.
Brian Mitchell.
Yes.
Mike Newman.
Yes.
And Melanie McAver.
Yes.
All right, the motion passes unanimously. And so the Dave Thomas conditional use permit and special permits are approved. That brings us to the last item that was pulled from consent. And that is item number two, the review and approval of December 15, 2022 action summary. Commissioner Mulder, I believe it was you who asked us to pull that one?
It was me, my apologies. I'm just going to confess, like, my wife brought me out dinner and then we went on breaks. I went and had dinner with my wife and my daughter and my grandson are here at the house. So I got sidetracked, my apologies. But on a serious note, I just don't, I, on the action summary, I personally in my notes show that we allowed a public commenter almost six minutes of public comment. And I don't know if that... and I don't know if that's something we keep note of, so that way we have a record of that. If someone feels that we may be discriminatory towards them at cutting them off at three minutes and not giving them almost six minutes, that's just a note I have from that meeting. And if I'm the only one that agrees with that theory, I'm totally fine, but I have to at least bring it up right now.
Okay, thank you for bringing that up. Commissioner Mitchell, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that that's a Pandora's box that I don't think should be opened. The length of time that people speak can be lengthened at the discretion of the chair based on various factors, and if we had to keep track of what those factors were and the exact amount of time each speaker got, it would take additional staff time ad infinitum, and I think that that's not a very useful use of staff's time. Thank you.
Commissioner Mulder, did you put your hand back up? Or was it still up?
Yes, I put it back up. I just want to note on the record, I don't disagree that some people would say it's Pandora's box, but when public comment is allowed, almost double the time. I think it's something that should be flagged. But as I said, if I'm one of seven, I'm totally fine with that. At least I brought up my concerns right now by pulling this, and if it moves forward as it is, I'm fine with that. I understand its majority rules, but as I said, I have to bring up a concern I have.
Okay, well, I mean, I'll go ahead and respond to that, although welcome any other commissioners to jump in. But I don't think that that is something that we would want to put into the action summary because there's a lot of things that happen in meetings, including the specific details of what are brought up by public comment that don't make it into the action summary, and it would feel oddly incongruous for us to put that in this document. As for the incident itself, I, as chair, I will take responsibility for the fact that I was handling that item as I saw fit, and I did give that, you're referring to Mark Thurmond, who was the author of the letter, and the reason why I chose with my chair's discretion to give him a little bit of extra time to speak on that item was simply the fact that we had elevated a letter that was received and made it an agenda item with a director responding to it and writing a letter. And in that light, I thought it was appropriate, you may disagree, but I thought it was appropriate to give him a little bit of extra time to speak on it. It wasn't just normal public comment, as I saw it. But again, I apologize, and I will be careful going forward that I try to make sure I'm doing it with the, at least the blessing of most of the commission if I do that. Commissioner McCavver, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I 100% agree with that, with both points. I, you know, under, in this case, the letter writer could arguably be interpreted as an applicant, and so could have been awarded the same number of minutes as, for example, an applicant, because the entire topic was in response to that person's letter. So although I wouldn't strictly interpret it that way, I can certainly understand why the chair would use their discretion in that way. I wasn't here at that meeting, so I can't comment further on it, but just on the surface, it seems to me, you know, not inappropriate that the person was given extra time. And then I agree that it doesn't need to go into an action summary. There's been countless other times when people have gone over their time, and we've never put that in an action summary.
Okay, Commissioner Newman?
And my two senses is, I think you used the discretion well on that, but I don't believe that he was viewed as an applicant. It would just be that it was a little bit more time given for this gentleman at that point. But I agree that we should not be putting those things, those action-type things, because this is more of a overall view of the items that are discussed and put up before us. If people want more details, they can go back to the video, and that's why that is around as well, so.
Great point. Okay, Commissioner Mulder, last word to you.
Last word to me, and I believe I said this at the hearing. Yes, some people thought maybe viewed as applicant, applicants are paying, you know, a decent sum of money to compensate for staff time and all the other things. There was no application fee. It's going to be what it's going to be. I'm going to vote against. I'm going to make a motion to approve the action summary, just to move this along and not take up the whole night, and I'm probably, I'm going to vote against it, which is going to be weird to make a motion. And it is what it is. We agree to disagree, and I'm, we're going to move on and have great meetings ahead of us, and that's how it's going to be.
I certainly do appreciate you flagging this item, and I honestly appreciate your feedback to me on that point and not liking exactly how I handled it. So before we get to a motion, though, I do want to open this matter for public discussions or public comments. Since I see a hand up, I'm going to invite Public 7454 to speak on this item.
Well, as being known as a frequent public commenter and not being, minding being eliminated to three minutes, I totally concur with the majority of the comments made by the commissioners. This is the job of the chair. It's his discretion, and I did not feel anything was done inappropriate. Regarding things entered in the minutes, you know, I've attended meetings where, like, Scotia Community Services District, and they may take, you know, five lines to express what I've said in there during public comment on an agenda or a non-agenda item, such as, "I object to you billing me $48,000 for water," and you can put that under potential litigation. So anyway, those kinds of things are within the purview of the chair, and I strongly support you moving on, and I feel that the chair, both Noah and your prior chair, did an excellent job as far as accommodating the public comment. They gave you the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, sir. All right, any other comments on this item?
Chair Levy, I just had Commissioner Mulder not pull this item. I would have pulled it, and I just want to let you know that I will abstain from voting on the actions of the commission before I was a commissioner.
Fair enough. Thank you for that. Okay, I will go ahead and close public comment on this item, but yes, I hear your explanation for that. That makes perfect sense, Commissioner Scavdall. All right, and then I guess there's nothing left but to vote on this item. I mean, to get a motion.
Motion.
Yeah, right.
I'll move that we approve item number two of the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Was Thomas's not a motion?
Well, the most.
I thought I made a motion at the very beginning, honestly.
No second.
I wasn't clear if you.
You are right, no second.
Yeah, there was no second made, and I thought that was more saying you intended to motion later, and I sort of stopped you from doing it. Anyway, we've now got a motion by Commissioner Mitchell and a second by Commissioner McCavver. So, Trip, could we go ahead and get a vote on this item?
Ira Scavdall.
Abstain.
Thomas Mulder.
Hello.
Melanie McCavver.
Yes.
Mike Newman.
Yes.
Brian Mitchell.
Yes.
And Noah Levy.
Yes. Okay, so the motion passes four to one with one abstention, and thank you for that hearty and useful discussion of how we conduct our business and how we record it. All right, and that now brings us to item H, new business, nothing on that part of the agenda. So then, item I, report from planner. Director Ford, do we have anything to discuss there?
We really don't have anything to discuss there. There, I don't believe there have been any board meetings since the last time the commission met, so there have been no actions. We do have an appeal going forward on the 10th or 24th, so you'll, we'll meet again before we have an appeal from the board.
Okay, since you bring it up, and I do always appreciate you flagging items that either have occurred or maybe are about to occur at the supervisors pertaining to our topics, what's the item that's coming up for appeal on the 10th?
It's the cultivation site that was out in the Honeydew area. It was five acres of cultivation, if I recall, Cisco Farms.
Cisco Farms.
And Petrolia, thanks.
Petrolia, yes. Okay, I remember it well. Okay, thanks for letting us know that that is coming before the board.
Yeah. And then I did want to follow up on public notice. So normally, we give public notice in a couple different forms, particularly related to cannabis. If there, if the application is in a community plan area, we give public notice at the time that we basically deem the application as complete and send out the referral package to other departments and agencies to review. That is a peculiar requirement of the CCLUO, the Commercial Cannabis Land Use Ordinance. That's not a component of all the zoning ordinance. Normally, it's really important to make sure that the project description is stable, that there's an understanding of where the points of concern may be relative to a regulatory standpoint or to an environmental standpoint before starting to engage the public, because we end up, the public ends up being concerned about a lot of things that really need to be resolved anyway, and so it's better to have that resolved before engaging with the public. So that being said, normally, if there's an environmental document that's been prepared, we give public notice of the availability of that environmental document, and that is usually, for a negative declaration, is 30 days for an EIRS, 45 days now, and that happens well before the hearing process. If, going into the hearing, if there's no environmental document, or if the environmental document's gone through the public review process, the typical standard is 10 days before the hearing. If we realize that there is likely to be public controversy, we schedule a public meeting. And an example of that is something that's coming up on the meeting of the 19th for the Planning Commission, is there is a solar farm that's being considered near Arcata. And so recognizing that there was a previous project out in the immediate vicinity of this that generated an awful lot of attention, we scheduled just such a public meeting. That was attended by, as I recall, nine of the applicant's representatives and two members of the public. So we tried. But you will, you may get comments that, you know, we're doing things at the last minute and, you know, pushing this through. But we did try to anticipate the public concern there. In situations where there's been notice given and the public is concerned, such as the one that was considered tonight, we are very willing to put the brakes on, schedule a meeting, schedule a site visit, meet with the public, to try to resolve things to the extent feasible before it comes before the Planning Commission, so that really the issues have been clearly identified, articulated, resolved, or proposed resolutions are available, and then that is presented to the Planning Commission. You know, a lot of people want to see notice far earlier, and there's some benefit to that, but then the question really is, is when is notice early enough, and at what point do you start to hamper the application process by trying to make sure that the public has their right? And so there's got to be a balance there. I think that overall, we do a pretty good job of trying to be sensitive to the fact that part of our constituency is the public. And so when somebody expresses concerns, we will schedule public meetings. I know Commissioner Newman, in particular, was at a, yep, a public meeting in Myrtle Town relative to a small subdivision, and that was well-attended. I think there were 20 or 30 people, neighbors, that were there, and that actually worked to the benefit of the process, the project, and it gave a better public hearing for the Planning Commission. So I, if there's a desire to see something done different, we can explore that and bring that, you know, suggest options that would really require a code change or process change. But right now, I would submit to you for your consideration that we do try to be sensitive to the public.
Thanks very much for that explanation and that answer. Commissioner Newman?
Yes, thank you, Chair. And I appreciate that explanation and bringing that back out to the public so that they do know that it is worked on, it is not done in the dark, things are not just sprung on people, especially as we're going forward on the cannabis, as well as other plans, too, that it's important to engage the public and get input there, but not too early because sometimes those applicants still don't have it all fleshed out, too. So thank you very much, Director.
Yeah, and I'll just say again, I really do commend the staff on the job you did around this Maple Creek project and the fact that you were willing to go ahead and continue this item or recommend continuation for a few weeks so that you could go out there and have that meeting with the applicant and the neighbors right in the same week of Christmas, you know, and then a follow-up meeting with the applicant the following week to discuss what had come out of that. So it feels to me like the process worked really well in the case of this project. Good job. Commissioner McCavver?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to remind everyone again of ACELA. I've brought it up a couple times, but anyone can go on there and look at projects as they develop. And so, you know, if there are those, you know, likely few members of the public who wish to do that, that is available. You just go to ACELA Humboldt, and everything is right there, so.
Would you spell that out for the public?
Oh, yes, A-C-C-E-L-A, Humboldt.
Great point to make, Commissioner McCavver, because again, yes, a lot of information gets put out there regarding a project well in advance of the public hearing about it. So great reminder. Okay, well, with that, I think we can just move on to item J, Planning Commission discussion items, where we have a chance for commissioners to bring up any item for discussion or questions to the director or anything like that. Anyone have anything on that item? Not tonight? All right. Well, then, oh, sorry, there is a hand. I'm so sorry, I missed you. Commissioner Mulder, go ahead.
Discussion items. Well, I'm just going to share with my fellow commissioners, I saw myself 600 KW this morning. I believe it was being used down here to power residences and businesses here in Southern Humboldt, but yeah, just sharing that with you.
All right, anybody else? Seeing none, then we will close that item, and that brings us to adjournment with a reminder that our next meeting is January 19th. That will once again be a hybrid meeting, both in-person and on Zoom. All right, so with that, we are adjourned.